I'll call this meeting to order. I'll ask Councilwoman Cook to lead me in prayer and Councilman Nakhan to lead me in pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to encourage and engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect our community. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmembers. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission to the council must be handed to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica L. Williams seated to my left. When addressing the council, please state your name and title for official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. And finally, all documents with reference to the meetings can be found on the LCG website. Council announcements. Item number seven, discussion item, procedure for awarding contracts. Councilmember Glenn Lazard is requesting that this item be pulled. More information is being gathered, and this item shall be placed on a future agenda. I'd like to wish a happy Professional Municipal Clerks Week to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica Williams.
I didn't put that on there, but thank you.
So, Professional Municipal Clerks Week is celebrated during the first full week of May and is aimed at increasing the public's awareness and municipal clerks and vital services they provide for local government and their community. So Ms. Veronica, thank you. Thank you. I know you're an incredible resource, not just for us, this community locally, but across the state. I know many municipalities reach out to you for your guidance and your expertise. So, thank you for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
No, just thank you, and thank you to the council, and I appreciate your support. And I have an awesome team.
All right. Chair announcements. I do not have any. Councilmember Nakhan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make sure everybody was aware that this Saturday, May 8th, we're bringing, I should say, the Kadena Center for the Arts in association with MacFlaff Incorporated is bringing back the Students Arts Expo. They're having outdoor- Live activities from 3:00 to 8:00 this Saturday, May 8th. It's free to the public. It's a very family-friendly atmosphere. I encourage all to be there, so these students from grades K through 12th grade can show their beautiful artwork and their impressions and get some inspiration from the public. But please, if you can, show up. Also, the second Saturday Art Walk will be coming up, the Saturday after that. Just to make sure everybody was aware. But try to make the Students Arts Expo this weekend, please. Thank you. Downtown, Kadena Center for the Arts, and they'll be having some downtown activities in tents. But once you go to the center, they'll direct you. This Saturday, May 8th. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to acknowledge an event that occurred on yesterday. We had a community walk-through in the McComb, Vizier area, and we were joined by members of the City Marshal's Office, the Lafayette Police Department, and the Sheriff Department. And I simply want to acknowledge City Marshal Thomas, Sheriff Garber, and Police Chief Glover for their participation in this event. And I made the comment to them, and I'll repeat it here, even though it's only been a very short time that Chief Glover has been in office and Marshal Thomas has been in From what I can see, my initial impression is that this is probably the best working relationship that I've seen between all three of those law enforcement agencies in some time. And I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing so far in terms of their cooperation amongst the agencies and their collective dedication to the community. Just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other council announcements. Moving on to the Executive Mayor President's Report. Budget-to-actual comparison from city funds 2021 preliminary. Mayor?
Oh, you took my line. Budget-to-actual comparison of major city funds.
There it is. Took the words right out of your mouth.
You did. Literally, that's efficiency.
We're so insane.
But I also echo, Madam Chair, your kind words from Ms. Veronica. I don't know where Ms. V is, but we also echo that and our awesome staff. So, thank you so much. Also, Councilman Lazard, thank you for also joining that community walk. I thought that was a lot of unity there, so we appreciate that. And then also over the weekend, Madam Chair, and to the public, an outstanding event over at Brown Park, which is the Greater Lafayette Little League, kicked off their first season. So, first season here ever. Councilman Lewis is there. We appreciate your attendance and your support. And this is really important because, you know, we're going post-COVID, and we had over 1,400 children sign up total for baseball, softball. But this new opportunity was just over 700 kids, both baseball and softball, with this Little League experience. We still have the Pony League in certain parts of our parish, and we still have Lafayette Little League in the central part of our city. So, these are all additional opportunities in Parks and Recreation. Just very, very proud of the community, very proud of our Director Hollis Conway. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions. This is a public hearing. Speaker forms are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Cindy, will you please read?
City Resolution 8, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving the appointment of Jeffrey Stewart as Director and Gregory LaBey as Alternate Director to the Louisiana Energy and Public Power Authority Board of Directors.
I've got a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion. Not seeing any public comment. All right, let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Moving on to reports and discussion items. Cindy, will you please read?
Budget allocation schedule.
All right. Councilman Lazard, you requested this, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is on the agenda as a discussion item, obviously. And the reason it's placed on the agenda is because, obviously, this is an area of heightened public concern, if you will, in terms of how we are allocating costs respectively for various departments and services between the city and the parish. And at last year's, as we were going through last year's budget hearings, we spent a lot of time on this issue, trying to figure out how we came up with the allocation that we were using last year. And it was brought to my attention that with every administration, there has been a different approach, if you will, in terms of how this allocation should work. And one of the conversations we had last year was, and I see we've just been provided some information, it's new to me, that I guess that describes, I guess it purports to describe how the different administrations have approached this. I guess that's what this information does, but we just received it, so I really don't know. But in any event, we spent a lot of time last year talking about this, and there didn't seem, to me anyway, to be any particular reason as to why we were using a particular allocation or a particular formula. And one of the things that I was left with, or at least I was of the impression, that sometime between the time we finished up last year, adopting last year's budget, and preparing for this one, some conversations were going to be held as to what was the best way to approach this and hopefully come up with a amicable solution, if you will. Because one of the things that I wanted to avoid was us spending time, actually, when we're actually doing the middle of the budget process, trying to figure out whether or not we were doing it in a fair and equitable manner. And unless I'm missing something, those conversations haven't been held. So, it seems like we're going to be back in the same position this year that we were in last year, trying to figure out if the approach we're taking is proper, fair, and equitable. So, it's here for a discussion item, and, like I said, there didn't seem to be any particular rhyme or reason as to why we were using a particular allocation formula last year. And obviously, last year was my first year going through the budget process. So, I was kind of learning on the fly, if you will. But still, I was somewhat disappointed that we didn't have any particular rhyme or reason as to why we were doing things a certain way. And like I said, I'm bringing it up now because I don't want us to get, find ourselves in the same situation we were in last year, where we are spending an extensive amount of time while we're in the middle of actually going through the budget, trying to figure out what the proper remedy is. So, it's on the floor, I guess, Madam Chair, for discussion.
Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, Councilwoman. Chairman, excuse me. Yes, I mean, I'm kind of echoing similar things that Mr. Lazard is speaking about, too. And I guess, just getting this information right now, are you prepared to maybe, you want to talk about it?
I'm happy to talk about it, but first, let me just tell you what I gave you.
Do you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Oh, my name is Lori Toops. I am the CFO of the Consolidated Government. What I gave you, I was, this item was put on the agenda. I was not told about it. I was not sent a list of questions, but I was told to be prepared to discuss it. So, I thought, well, what do I do? So, I went, I knew you had a committee meeting last week. I went back, I looked at the committee meeting, and I said, oh, I need to go prepare to answer those questions. So, that's what this is. It's a result of questions that were asked at the committee meeting, but none of this is new information. All of this is from old budget books and allocation schedules published in the budget books. Maybe required further narrative to answer people's questions, but it certainly is not new information. So, I wouldn't just throw new information at you like that. And Mr. Lazard, I couldn't agree with you more. Last year in April, I do recall sending an email saying, hey, guys, it's April. If this is going to be talked about in the budget process, now is the time to do it. Because the budget, even though it, I said this the other day at the committee meeting, this is not material in the size of this government. It's less than 5% of the budget. When you look at the reimbursements, it gets less than 3%. This is not a large item in the budget process. But people have become very passionate about it. And I guess maybe somebody above two is passionate about it. And people want to talk about it, even though it's not that material. So, anyway, last year, I tried to get that conversation going. We had a lot of hang-ups last year. I'm not going to blame it on any one or anything in particular, but we didn't get it off the ground. We do need it. And what the allocation schedule is, the mayor president is allowed to introduce any budget he wants to introduce. That's his right. He's given that privilege in the charter. The city-parish allocation reduces a couple of line items in the budget down, through that calculation, it gets to those line items. So, while the city-parish allocation schedule is not required to be in the audit, it's material so you can see how it got to those particular line items in the budget. It's not required. It would be foolish if any CFO tried to omit it from the budget. So, that's why it's in there. But at the end of the day, the budget's adopted by the council, and those line items are approved by the council. The problem is, is that if you wait till the end of the budget process to start maneuvering and making all these changes, one body of government may not have enough funds to meet the needs of the other. The past couple of years, I heard councilmen say that we had to reduce the budget because the parish didn't have enough money. And I'm telling you, that is not the truth. We reduced it because the city didn't have, we wanted, we needed to use less fund balance in the city for our bond rating. The city is the one that has all the outstanding debt, and the city's bond rating is very important in order for us to continue our bond program. I can go through some of these things in here, kind of shows, quickly, kind of shows you how we got to where we are, and it shows you how different mayor presidents have treated this differently over the past. In particular, I hope to address some of Ms. Cook's questions.
Can you move your microphone a little closer to your mouth with the rain being so loud, please? Thank you.
Sure. Can I ask you just, one question I had was in budgets past, like in Joey Durrell's budget, there was a list of deficit by the-
I got it. I got you covered. Got it all here for you.
Is there a reason why it wasn't listed in, just, because it's not, wasn't, I mean, I never saw it when I got on the council. It was not listed in the Robidoux budget. Was there a reason?
Because it's not there. And I'll explain that to you right here. So, you know, the mayor president, when he presents that, he has the liberty to present that information. He's given you all the details so you can see it. But you can see, this began in 2012, 13, under the Durrell administration. We looked at it. He wasn't happy with the way that the allocation was done, and we looked at possibilities to change it. At that time, when we did the budget, you can see on page, on page 1 of 9, the little red numbers there. This is from his budget message, where he states that this is still in progress. He says, I have it highlighted right there in the middle of the page, "In this new analysis", in parentheses, he states, "which is still underway and subject to revision." So, this was new. It was just starting in the budget process, and we did not complete it that year. At the time he did this, we did this, we thought that all of the administrative services would be allocated by population. After running it by the cost consultants, they flat, put the nicks in a couple of those calculations, but there were a lot that remained by population. And so, that was in 2012, 2013. And he mentions in 2012, 2013, this is the first time where you'll see it mentioned that there was a shortage, but the work is still in progress, and we didn't finish it. On page 3 of 9, that is where we finished the process that year, and he addressed it. And you can imagine, as I know you felt and you mentioned at the committee meeting, it's not acceptable to have a deficit. And he states at the bottom of this page here, "We had to find a way to make the city whole by having the parish pay the city back." Later on, he says, "We have made the city whole by taking two parish funds and using them to fund the operation of public works. This frees up city general fund dollars, thereby keeping our reserve account healthy." So, on that city-parish allocation schedule, and he was very clear to make sure, he made, we made these overall changes that year, but we wanted to make sure that people didn't accuse us of sweeping anything under the rug. He made sure that I added extra performers in the budget. We put them in the budget that year for the first year and kept them in the budget for several years after. And in those performers, you can see how the city general fund was paying for all of roads and drainage and getting a smaller reimbursement. Later on, when we did this transaction, the city general fund was no longer paying for the roads and drainage in the city. That is being paid by the parish-wide special revenue funds. That is how he offset the deficit that was in the city-parish allocation table. And so, if you went back to the 1314 budget, you would see those additional schedules, and you will see in his budget message where he says, "We have made the city whole." So, what you're looking at, and it's because you're not an accountant, I get it, what you're looking at, on page 6 of 9, this is the first time in the budget book where you see that little calculation, and to me, that's a reconciliation. I have this here. I want to make sure it's not hiding in the budget. So, I put this reconciliation on the schedule to draw attention to it. Unfortunately, maybe not everybody really understood what it meant. The city-parish allocation, when doing all these allocations by population, ended up in about a $5.6 million deficit. Under the Durrell administration, we said that wasn't acceptable. We have to cover that deficit. So, that calculation at the bottom is showing you how we covered it. So, we didn't just sit back and say, oh, there's a deficit, we're happy, move on. We had a plan for covering it, and it was covered in the budget process. It was covered by taking all the maintenance and operations, the salaries for roads, bridge, drainage employees, taking that out of the city general fund and moving that into the special revenue funds of the parish-wide special revenue funds where the millage money goes. So, that saved the city general fund money. And it doesn't hurt to say, it also helps secure our bond rating. If you recall, back at that time, the bond rating agencies were reevaluating and changing their models in which they rated general funds and city governments, and we had to make sure that we weren't using too much of our fund balance in order to maintain our bond rating. So, this shifted those expenses to the parish-wide funds. So, it, like I said, it didn't hurt our bond rating. So, while you see that deficit there, this is covering that deficit. The deficit would have been there had we not shifted this money. So, it was covered.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? And I understand there's a deficit, and I think every year, do we have a deficit? I guess my point about that is-
There's no deficit. There would have been a deficit had we not covered it through this other method.
In 2013, you're talking about?
In, yes, in 2013, 14.
Okay.
And it was covered each year thereafter, under the Durrell administration, using the same model. What we did, and if you look at this reconciliation, coverage of parish deficit, we included, first we had to look at the city taxes, because you've got to give the city 100% credit for all the city taxes. Then we looked at the expenses that were shifted from the city general fund to the special revenue funds, and at the end of the day, we were still $1.2 million short. So, what we did in that budget was we took $1.2 million of the parish-wide millage money and spent that on capital projects in the city. It could have been spent anywhere, but it was spent in the city in order to coverage that deficit based on the city-parish allocation plan under the Durrell administration.
Okay.
So, it was covered. So, to show you, another way to look at it is, and, you know, I live this, I realize that, y'all don't live it every day. So, what I did is I took the 1213 city, on page 7 of 9, this long page, I took the 1213 allocation schedule, I took the public works section, and put it side by side with the public works section from the following year, 1314. And you will see in the 1213, this is before we corrected what the administration at that time saw as a deficit, the city-parish allocation schedule included almost $16 million of public works expenditures. And $16 million was being allocated. The following year, under the Durrell administration, when we changed the model, we shifted all those public works expenses to the parish-wide, parish-wide special revenue funds, so they were no longer being allocated. The allocation for public works dropped to $3.8 million. So, that shifted those expenditures away from the city general fund. And that's just a comparison there. And you can see on the schedule for 1314, normally, an accountant wouldn't have all this stuff on a schedule with zeros all the way across, but I wanted to draw attention to it. I wanted you to know, there were numbers there last year, and there are no numbers there this year, other than, and I could have hid the rows, but I didn't think that was an appropriate way to handle it the first year of a change. I wanted to make sure that not only did we highlight it in the budget messages, we highlighted it on these schedules. So, and when the Robidoux administration came in and they made the change, you can see in the budget message that is on page 8 of 9 on your attachment, there was just a little paragraph saying, hey, there's major changes in the budget allocation method. The allocations went primarily from population to tax revenue that was available for these expenditures. And so, that paragraph was in there to draw your attention to the changes. So, when you look at it, you know, not only does this schedule allocate administrative, my salary, Veronica's salary, there's a lot of things in these allocation schedules. The Durrell administration took this schedule one way, and the Robidoux administration took it a total different way. So, if the Durrell, and I kind of don't think that you guys would follow this route today based on what happened at last year's budget meeting, but if the Durrell administration's plan of cost allocation in 1314 was the way you wanted to go, where you said the parish was $6 million short, where we said the parish was $6 million short, included in that $6 million, $1.8 million for city recreation, $557,000 for the city science museum, Cajun Dome transfer, $230,000. All of these things were allocated to the parish general fund. Based on what happened at last year's council meeting, I don't think you guys are going to do that. I don't think you want, last year, you said you didn't want the parish to have control over recreation. So, if you went this route, you would have the parish's vote on recreation, the science museum, the Hyman Center, city golf courses. So, part of that $6 million shortage was the parish funding those city activities based on population. And I think that whole way of thinking has changed with the charter vote and where we are today versus where we are back then. The Robidoux administration memorialized that in the changes that he made in his first budget, where he said that the parish wasn't going to pay any of those city expenses. So, changing the allocation method away from population probably affected half of that deficit. The other half of that deficit was by not having the parish pay for some of these city functions. That was a large part of it. So, I guess if I had anything to advise you, is looking back on what was done in the past might not fit your model today. I'd really start from scratch. I'd really start from scratch, decide, you know, what it is. Right now, when Josh came in, he said, "I want the parish to pay what it's supposed to pay, and I want the city to pay what it's supposed to pay. And if we've got to cut somewhere, we're going to cut. We're not altering the allocation table." And that was, you know, the same instructions with the Robideau administration. If you go back and look, when the Robideau administration, when we made these changes, we did cut, and we cut some people that weren't happy, and there were some threats of lawsuit in litigation because of some of those cuts. So they didn't alter the allocation schedule to fit the money available. What they did was amend the budget to fit what the allocation schedule had as what was available. And some of the fund balances kind of got pretty low in those years. So, I know you were perplexed about what happened to that $6 million, but the $6 million deficit really wasn't a deficit because it was covered another way under the Durrell administration. He said, "If I'm going to have a deficit here, then I'm going to fix it here," and that's what we did. Later on, under the Robideau administration, Robideau administration said, "We said, 'Well, we're not going to have the parish put up any money for the Cajun Dome, the Hyman Center, city golf courses, the science museum, or recreation. We're going to, you know, we're going to use just city money for that.'" So that took a lot of the deficit away right there. And then the rest of the deficit probably was from the change in the allocation method, which at the end of the day, they both took two different routes, really, two different routes, I mean, all over the place. And at the end of the day, they almost ended up in the same location when it came to the amounts transferred. So, you can take any kind of route, and I think you're probably going to end up pretty close to where you started. So, that's pretty much what I prepared to answer some of the questions that were asked at the meeting. I hope I helped you.
It was helpful, I probably could hear it all over again. But no, yes, it was helpful to some extent. I guess, I appreciate what the mayor was doing with this budget as well, in terms of separating to where city dollars are paying for city buildings, parish is paying for parish's responsibilities. And I guess I would love to be able to take that one step farther in actually doing that in a budget presentation, in terms of, within the budget, we had a city budget, we had a parish budget of where those monies were, and then we had the consolidated budget. So, we have three separate tabs in our book to where we, for somebody like me, who, this blows my mind, that it would be easy, I think, for me and for the public, maybe, to understand a little better, just what you're saying, in being able to look at it. So I don't know if that's, I mean, I think it can be done, I mean, I think we're not far from that, as far as, but I would love to see it presented that way, so that we could follow the dollars, because, you know, we were told that there's paybacks from the parish currently now. Parish, you know, through the years, the last four years or so, the parish would pay back some money to the city.
Somebody would have, I surveyed my staff, I thought, "They're keeping some secret books off to the side that I don't know about," right? Every one of my staff said they didn't have any records or any knowledge of that. But I would leave it open that if somebody knows of a particular project, we can go back and look it up. But to say that right off the bat, we're not aware of that. We bill the parish monthly for my salary, their salary, and the parish pays every month. In some cases, we do hold some bills on the parish side, that's payments to the volunteer fire departments. I make them wait till we get our property tax money in January. Some of the, maybe, district attorney payments, they have to wait, but regular monthly reoccurring bills, they're paid on time with parish money. So I'm not really sure where that's coming from.
Yeah.
But if you get an idea, let me know, we'll look it up, you know, we're always happy to look that up. It kind of makes it even harder now that we have to give you all those monthly statements at the council meetings. So, I can't imagine where that was done, but...
Yeah.
I'll research anything.
I wouldn't know where to look for that either.
Right.
I mean, if you can't find it, I surely couldn't find it, so...
Well, I will tell you, under the Durrell administration, we, you know, we said that this deficit was not acceptable, and we had to find a way to solve it. And, you know, there was discussion, could we book a loan and take money later on when the parish has it? And then you can't do that. So we had to find a solution within that fiscal year, and that was what we did.
And I guess that's one of the reasons, as far as, for those particular instances, tracking where the dollars are going to make sure that these dollars can be spent on this, or are they being put here? And I know you follow that, I know you are very diligent about that, I guess, but I also would like to see how we could follow that, so we could explain if someone says, "Well, those are city dollars, why are you spending it on this?" And so, if there was a way to make that clearer, you know, that they weren't city dollars were spent where they were supposed to be. I mean, I think we kind of uncovered that a little bit with the parish parks, that's been going on for years with the city millage. So things like that, that I think have came to light, and so...
Well, I'll tell you this, I am not a fan of our budget, the way our budget is developed. Years ago, I wanted to change it when I was new over here, and it was brought to my attention that the charter says that we have to budget by department. I wouldn't budget that way. Maybe other governments budget that way, but we are made up of a series of dedicated tax flows. You know, we have a certain set of money that we can spend on roads and bridges. We have another set of recreation. That's how I would present a budget, I would present it by fund, because that's how people vote on their taxes to be spent. And, you know, it might require, well, of course, I have to come to every budget meeting, but it might require another director or another department to come to five budget meetings, and it might require more budget meetings. We try to cram a lot into the few budget meetings that we have. And maybe that's what we have to look at, expanding the number of meetings, budgeting by fund. I can still present a book by department to meet the charter, but when the money is dedicated for a certain use, showing a taxpayer, "Hey, this is the money you gave for drainage, this is the salaries in drainage, this is the transportation in drainage," and showing that money, to me, you know, would be much, I think that you would see it, it's a lot easier probably for a layperson to understand it. When you hear 12 years, that 12th year, you're going to look at that budget book and it'll be an old hat for you. But right now, it's...
I look forward to that day.
Right now, I agree, it's not friendly.
Not there yet, yes. And employees, we share, LCG has employees, which are shared in departments all across the board, and paid out of, not out of, it's, there was an allocation formula for that.
So what we've done, what I've done, really, what I've struggled to do over the years is reduce what's allocated. If it doesn't have to be allocated, we shouldn't allocate it. Even when it comes down to streetlights, they told me it was impossible to do a streetlight inventory. I said, "I'm not paying for them then. If you can't tell me where they are, I'm not paying for them." They did a streetlight inventory.
Perfect.
So, you know, we don't need to allocate stuff that we can direct charge. My salary, my time, the mayor's time, Veronica's time, that's always going to be allocated.
Right.
You know, public works, 90% of public works is not allocated. 90% of public works is paid by those special, those parish-wide special revenue funds. But you really can't see that the way the budget is.
So, where's the other 10% comes from?
The other 10% would be some of the things that you do see, that $3 million that's left in the allocation table. The engineering people that work at the project level, those people, there are some people in public works that maybe work from a tax for city buildings, they handle the buildings and those things, but those aren't the drainage and the street crews.
So those funds come out of a different fund, then?
Yes.
To pay for the other 10%, you tell me, 90% comes from those particular drainage funds, and then the other 10% will come from...
General funds.
Right, okay, so that's, yeah, and that's, I guess that's what...
A lot less.
Right.
Now, and I think it's easier to see.
What's actually 3% of our whole budget? When you say it's only 3%, what would be a dollar amount on that? It's like, a couple, is that 20 million?
Well, it depends upon, you look at the budget after, all the capital projects are rolled in, it's a billion-dollar budget.
Yeah.
So you're looking at 30...
I was just curious what we're looking at, yeah.
30 million.
Something like that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I know there's some other people that want to talk, so I'm going to, I'll sign off.
Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Lori, are you saying that roughly 30 million is allocated?
No, we, I went back, I'm kind of looking at that right now, I'm having some schedules prepared. We have about, in between 25 and 30 million that's allocated, but then we bill back money out, we bill it out to the library and other people, and they pay us back some, so at the end of the day, it's less than 25 million.
Okay, so, I'm not as concerned with the amount, and I'm sure that everyone up here would agree with the statement that I'm fixing to make, that we're not as concerned with the amount itself, as we are that it's done in a fair and equitable manner. So I don't think the dollar amount is really an issue for us. I don't think we've never made an issue of the dollar amount. My position is, whether it's 5 million or 50 million, it still should be done fairly and equitably. The other thing is, so you're saying at this particular point, or over the last couple of years or so, that the parish is not operating at a deficit? Is that what I heard you say?
The parish is not operating at a deficit, it's, the parish fund balance is not negative, there's two different, the city is operating at a deficit when they use fund balance. They're not operating at a deficit when they increase fund balance. So I don't know if you're talking about that, or whether they're actually in a negative fund balance situation.
Well...
Using more than they're taking in?
Well, you know, the part about the city operating at a negative, that's hard for me to comprehend, and I have to admit, that's hard for me to comprehend.
It hasn't since I've been here.
But I thought that's what I just heard you say, that the city is operating at a deficit.
If it uses, if, the city would be operating at a deficit if it used more than it had coming in. It has not done that since I've been here.
But I thought I just heard, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I'm just trying to figure it out and understand it, so that I can be better prepared as we approach this year's, you know, budget cycle.
We budgeted.
Okay, so, so you're saying neither the city or the parish is operating at a, just clarify for me, please.
Neither the city nor the parish is in a negative fund balance situation. Operating at a deficit, to me, means you're spending more than you have coming in, but if you have money in the bank, that's okay.
Well, right, because, and you're right, but, because to me, the allocation table of 80/20 is helping to cover the parish, no? Because at the last budget we had, I suggested changing that allocation to what I perceived to be a more fair allocation, and I suggested 60/40. And after much discussion, they said, "You will bankrupt the parish if you change that allocation table." So, I guess, does that allocation table of 80% paid for by the city and 20% paid by the parish...
Is it covering?
Does that cover the parish from being in a deficit?
I don't, I couldn't say yes to that.
Because we're talking about...
I just, I threw a number out, and 60, 60/40 was based off of population, and that was decided whenever we split, and that's why I just threw that number out.
That's fair, because I was just saying, because the councilman had mentioned that there was no rhyme or reason, basically, for what we did, and that's, couldn't be further from the truth.
Okay, so...
So you had a rhyme or reason, I was just curious.
Mine was based off whenever we split, the original charter commission back in, what was that, the 90s, suggested that we do by population 60, it was not exactly 60/40, it was right around there. And so I suggested we should do by population, or 60/40.
Yeah.
And that's what you and I spoke about, Mayor, and not saying anything, I know you don't want me to say, is that my suggestion, whenever we talked about budget and what we would like to see in the budget, one of my concerns was making, to me, a more balanced, based on population and taxpayer population, allocation table. And that was my suggestion to you, and you said you would look into it.
And I think that's, look, that's not an unfair position, because there is some objectivity there.
Sure.
I disagree with it, and as I learned, and Lori's schooled me up plenty of times, and educated me, and especially when I realized how small of the budget we're talking about as far as allocation goes. But that's okay, it's worth looking into. One other approach that we didn't use last year, and we, I may consider when I submit my executive report, is actual use. So is the, is, for example, ISNT, is 95% of what they do in the city of Lafayette, well, maybe it would be more, maybe it'd be much more fair to do 95% allocation to the city and 5% to the parish. Public Works, as Nned mentioned, the 10%, not the 90% that the parish is already funding and primarily in the city, but let's say the 10%. Even if we did the full 10% to the parish, that would be less than 20%, so maybe that would be fair. Maybe the staffs, I'm sure the council, I know that they keep good track of where their calls come from, I know my office does, maybe we can track where the calls come from, if it's the city and it's more than, or if it's less than 20%, maybe the city should pay more than the 80%. So I am considering that, and I think that's a fair approach. I do believe that the last allocation did, to my, based on the information I had, and you guys unanimously voted for, and I appreciate that, I think we all agreed that it at least put us in a position where the parish was paying for what it's supposed to pay for, and the city's paying for what it's supposed to pay for. But I'm open to any of these suggestions. I think the way that our jurisdictions, respectively, and the parish are set up, doing it based on population is not the most effective approach, in my opinion, to adequately appropriate, but I'm open to anything. So I love this discussion, I'm glad that we brought it up, but I was just sharing with you, there are other approaches that I'm taking, because I want it to be the most fair that we possibly can, and I think that's what you guys want to accomplish.
So, I sit at the floor, right?
No, you still have time, I didn't mean to interrupt, my apologies.
Okay, no, that's not a problem. So, just for point of clarification, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, I made the comment that, so let me clarify the statement I made, so that it's not misinterpreted, okay? When I say that there didn't appear to be any rhyme or reason as to how we came up with the allocation that we used last year, now let me clarify that. What I, none was presented to us, okay, that I can recall as to why we were using that particular formula. So, your statement, I think, is, you know, I don't know what to call it, but anyway...
Accurate, that's what I would call it.
You'd call it accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you entitle your opinion, obviously. And obviously, we're not going to agree on that point, but that's fine.
Okay.
So, none was presented to us, okay? And, the statement was made at a budget hearing, when I asked the question, and the response was, "That's all they can afford to pay." I don't know if anybody else on this panel...
Did someone reference that? Y'all remember who said that?
Remember that?
I remember who said that.
Or not?
Yeah.
But it was said, so that's where I got it from, okay?
That would not be an accurate or a fair way. Yeah, that would definitely not be a fair way.
Let me finish, please.
Yeah.
I didn't make that up, okay? So there's this rumor going around that I said whatever, whatever, okay? I was simply repeating what was said in a public meeting, okay? And like I said, I don't know if my fellow council members remember that comment being made or not, but it was made here in these chambers. So that's where I got it from, okay?
Let's, hold on, Mayor, we have Councilman Lewis, who hasn't had a chance to speak. Yes, I want to honor him. Councilman Lazard, you've completed your comments and questions?
Well, yes.
No, go ahead, no, keep going, I just wanted to make sure to get to Mr. Lewis.
So, Lori, so we talked about the science museum, the Hyman Center, and what have you, okay? So those things are exclusively city now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. So as far as for this year, and the allocation formula that we plan on using this year, do you plan on, or using the same formula that you used last year?
It'll be updated for the current numbers, but it will be, we will be allocating the administrative cost of the government based on the tax revenues available to pay the administrative cost.
So, is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that another way of saying ability to pay?
No, I don't agree with that at all.
No, and that's, that's a question, that's not a statement, that's a question.
No, I, when you're, and this, I think, where the Robideau administration got this, he's a CPA. I was going to say he was a CPA, no, he is a CPA, and familiar with fund accounting in government. And we have so many taxes, and each one of those revenues are restricted, so I can't use that drainage money to pay my salary. I can't use the recreation money to pay my salary. So what's left at the end of the day to pay my salary? That was the allocation method that was used, and that's what's still being used today.
Okay, so, my question still is, do we have any idea what the recommended allocation formula will be used for this year's budget?
You asked if I had an idea, and the idea, yes, I do, and it will be very close to what was used last year. Once we update it with the final audit of total revenues and those things, it'll be somewhere around that 80/20 for most of the allocations that are used. We don't plan on changing any of them. I haven't been instructed to change any of them.
So there are many approaches out there. I do believe that the approach that you just described is extremely fair and reasonable, but it's not unfair to look at other approaches as suggested by the council. I don't agree with the population model, and I explained why. But the use model, in my terms, okay, the use model may be a more accurate term. I don't think anybody can argue with trying to get as accurately as possible this 3% to 5% of the budget to make it fair, in the sense that the parish pays for what the parish is supposed to pay for, the city's paying for what the city's supposed to pay for. I would not, not consider the use model for each department, by the way. I wouldn't do a carpet paint with a broad brush. I don't think that's the most accurate way either. But again, I have not formulated that, I'm not comfortable enough to provide an executive budget to the councils with that approach yet, but in full candor, that is another model, and I'll entertain any model that the council wants to suggest.
And I can tell you that, you mentioned the cities should, might be paying more for certain departments than what we're currently paying now, based on what you come up with, and I have absolutely no problem with that. If it, if we have objective material or information that's presented to us that says the city should be paying more than what it's paying for this, this, or this, I have no problem with it. None whatsoever. That was never the issue. The issue is fairness, equity, and impartiality. That's what it's all about for me. And the city should pay its spare share.
And so should the parish.
And so should the parish.
Good news about this discussion, it gives me more confidence that we're all on the same page, that we want to end up at the same place. So I appreciate this, and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda.
I'll yield the floor to Councilman Lewis, Madam Chair.
Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Lori, one of your first statements you made when you came up here, you said that the mayor president can introduce any budget he wants to, right? Well, who makes sure that it's a fair budget?
You, the council. Y'all vote on it. I'm not going to let him, I'm going to really try not to let him introduce something that's so far out there, I can't explain it, because it's my job to explain it. But in the end, he is elected for that position, so that's part of his privilege, and it's in the charter that he introduces the budget. He doesn't adopt it. You guys adopt it.
But we have, we adopt some that we have to understand, correct? Something that we, it should be.
I hope that I do my job well enough that you understand it.
You win a lot of awards, so I guess you're doing your job.
Well, you know, I follow best practices.
We keep talking about the, two things we talk a lot about, bond ratings, always talking about that, the parish, and then the city, from my understanding what you said earlier as well, that the bond ratings, pretty much like Mr. Lazard was saying, that I had understood myself that the parish, the city doesn't have the funding. You know, that's what I saw to understand what Mr. Lazard was saying. But you're telling us something, not say different, but you're saying what you really meant, okay? But the bond rating. Then also, we keep talking about the parish budget and the city budget. What about unincorporated areas? Where do they fit in there? The unincorporated areas?
Unincorporated area is part of the parish, just like the city is part of the parish. As a city taxpayer, I pay the parish-wide taxes too.
So where do they fit in as far as a balanced budget or not? They're just part of the city and part of the parish?
Someone living in the unincorporated areas?
Yes.
The tax money they're paying is represented in those parish funds.
Do that shows that on the, the budget, when we get the budget, is, you have a line item for that, or just put in the parish or the city, who's ever close? I'm just trying to understand how you put it in with the city and the parish.
So, in the parish general fund, there's a revenue item that says parish general alimony. That revenue right there is paid by everybody that lives in the parish.
In the parish. And what happens to the city?
The city has a...
No alimony.
The city of Lafayette, in the city general fund, has a line item that says city general alimony. That might not be the exact title, but it's somewhere, something like that.
I never saw that, but I'm just asking.
It'll be in the city property tax, and it's in the city general fund, and only the people in the city of Lafayette pay that tax.
Only the people in the city pays that tax? Not the parish, or neither the unincorporated areas?
Not in the city general fund.
Explain the bond rating.
Bond rating is like your credit rating. If you're going to go, well, I just bought a house, so you know, you got to go get your credit rating to determine the interest rate that you're going to pay on your loan. In 2008, 2009, you may recall, with the downturn in the housing market, we had governments across this country that went bankrupt. And so the rating agencies started changing the way they looked at governments, at the way they rated governments. They used to look at, if it was a property tax bond, they used to look at the value of the properties in the parish. And if the values of the properties in the parish stayed stable, they gave you A+ and said, you've got a good rating. Then when all those cities and counties across the country went bankrupt, the rating agencies said, you know what, we need to look at something more than just the property values. We need to make sure they have money in the bank. We need to make sure they're liquid. So they started looking at your general fund and your O&amp;M money. What money do you have available off to the side to pay your note if the value of your property goes down? They wanted to make sure that you were liquid and had cash in the bank. So if I go to the, if we go to the rating analyst, and we want to get, we want to do a bond issue for city roads and bridges, and they look at our budget, and they say, my gosh, Lori, you're spending $18 million more than you have coming in. Is this all on a one-time expenditure? If I say, yeah, I'm building an $18 million bridge, they're good, they're happy, because they know it's not a reoccurring cost. But if they see that I'm spending $18 million on reoccurring costs, then they know in a couple of years we'll run out of money, and I don't have that backup savings account to pay my bills if I have a problem on the back end. So they changed the model. I don't really agree with it, because the governments that went bankrupt really had poor management to begin with. But, you know, we have strong financial management, very conservative spending practices, but I don't really have a say-so in the way they choose to do our rating. I know what they're going to look at, they're going to look at liquidity in the general fund to make sure that we can pay our bills. When we had this freeze, they were calling me up, hey, can you pay your bills? Can you pay your note? Well, yeah, of course we can, but anytime, anything like that happens, they're calling up. And that's the first time in my career in government, these past five years maybe, that you get calls when you have events, asking you if you're going to be able to pay your bills, so you know. That's the way the market has changed.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Vice Chair?
Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor?
Yes, Lori, I have one more question. Our budget hearings that are coming up, we have our separate city meetings, we have our parish meetings, and we have a couple of joint meetings on, for certain departments. You know, last year, we had the issue with Parks and Rec being combined with joint, and we eventually kind of maybe addressed that. I'm concerned, because I'm looking at what your, what your information here is...
That's not from me. I don't set the budget schedule, I don't do those department meetings. That's not from me. That's from your office.
Okay, well, but my question is this. Community development is apparently a department that we consider to be a joint department. Within that department, we have the Science Museum, we have the Hyman Performing Arts Center, which I'm reading here is totally funded by the city. So I guess I don't want us to get into that situation where we decide as a city that we want to maybe fund the Hyman Performing Arts, maybe a little bit more, but we are, we're, you know, we're sitting up in a joint meeting, and maybe the parish doesn't agree with us, but it's our money that we want to fund for this particular city-owned building. So I guess, you know, I guess my question is maybe not necessarily to you, maybe it's to what we're, you know, are we looking at, I know we've talked about community development and where we're going with that department, and so, you know, we're going to have, we're having an issue again, if that's the issue with city dollars funding something that's in community development that's being voted on by both councils.
Oh, thank you, Madam Corrigan.
We can talk some, I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there because I'm...
I think that's fair. I think, but my thoughts are this, I believe the councils figured that out. They, you remedied that, that if it's only city funds, that only the city council would vote on it, if only parish funds, a parish council would vote for it. My recommendation to both councils would be to codify that, and if legal, unless legal says we can't. But I would recommend an ordinance, a joint ordinance, that solidifies that position, because I think that gets us better centered on where we all want to be, where the city is paying for what the city is supposed to pay for, and the parish is paying for what the parish is supposed to pay for, but it also prevents what happened in last year. Even though, I'm giving you credit here, you figured it out without having that ordinance, but if you want to protect, in my opinion, if you want to protect that initiative, that thought, codify it into a joint ordinance, I think that would protect both councils with that.
Okay, thank you.
Or you can budget by fund.
Or you could, which is what the Hyman and the Science Museum...
They have their own fund.
Yes, exactly. So that might, that's why she's the CFO.
And I think the easier way is just, they can't make any adjustments to those particular line items, because it's 100% city, so we don't need to necessarily move them. They just know that it's 100% city, they can't move items from here to here. All right, Councilman Nakken, you have the floor.
And I'm trying to wrap my head around all this, of course, and simplify it from my own brain. Just as far as revenues, we have city taxes, property taxes, and we have parish property taxes. The city property taxes are paid strictly by city residents, collected and brought into the city funds to pay for city projects, and it's dedicated money for city projects only, correct?
There's some undedicated revenue in the city, but it's for city purposes, city uses.
And that city property taxes with Parks and Recreation, the reason we're paying for parks that are outside the city limits is because the city owned those parks, is that correct?
I don't think so.
We were responsible for the parks.
It was, when I asked the question, when I asked the question...
But not anymore. I know we got rid of them, but at the time, we were responsible for those parks, for the most part.
They were parish parks, but...
They were parish parks originally, and then the solidarity government and the solidity council appropriated 300 million dollars from that.
Not hot. Okay, so the parish did kick in?
But they were parish parks.
The parish kicked in for those parks at the time?
So it was the solidity council appropriated to subsidize out of the city general fund to the tune of $3 to $3.5 million each year over 19 years.
Okay, so, all right. So, but that's been rectified?
That's correct.
And that is, that's finished, okay?
That's been rectified through the last budget, and we appreciate you, but also through the parish council working with other municipalities, so that, so that the money's not needed in the future.
So moving forward, that won't be an issue in Parks and Recreation. Now, the parish dollars that are collected, the parish property taxes, that's parish-wide, that's every parish resident pays that, including the residents of Broussard, and Youngsville, and Scott.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That money being taken in, some of that parish money is spent in the city of Lafayette, is that correct? I mean, for different things, because we're part of the parish?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that parish money spent in the city of Broussard, the city of Scott, and the city of Youngsville?
To a degree. But I will say that not nearly to the extent of the city of Lafayette.
The city of Lafayette, so...
And that's historical damage.
So we get the lion's share of that, so we benefit the rewards of that money, okay? And that money being separated is basically that simple, in some ways, is that the parish money is spent parish-wide, the city gets a lot of the allocations because of the parish projects through drainage and roads that are done through the parish monies, just by the way they're dedicated. And the city's pretty much stays in the city. And the allocations are money that's not in those dedicated taxes that has to be paid out of general funds, et cetera. And in the mayor's comment, and I think pretty much Mr. Lazard was on the same page, was getting very objective with that. The use tax, basically, based on use, it may be 95% city, 5% parish, but that's a double-edged sword. It could be 60% city, 40% parish. So it just depends on how it falls. So I think the use tax, from what y'all were talking about, y'all on the same page, that would be very fair when we get real objective about it. So I think we can simplify this moving forward, just by showing us what's going on.
And some things are...
Being open with that.
And some things are easier to measure than others?
I agree, you know, ISNT, legal, you know, you can probably monitor those hours, time spent with that. Some things are a little harder, but I think that we can clarify this by being a little more open and honest, and, you know, open up the pages for us, because we need help. We do need help. We don't have the knowledge you have in the budget, that's for sure, Ms. Toops. And I want to thank you for your time. I think you did a very good job explaining it tonight.
Well, I hope that helped, and if you have any specific questions, you know, most everything, I can find a reference in the budget book or the audit to show you where it is. That's my job, and I'm going to know where it is. Not everybody knows where to find that information, but I'm happy to lead you to it and point it out.
Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was going to, I was just going to kind of reiterate that point that you just made. It would certainly simplify it for us, and for the public, general public. The only other question I had was, in terms of, in terms of budget, in terms of actually accounting, if you will, is it logical or feasible to have three separate accounts? A city account, a parish account, and a joint account? Because my, I guess my thought process is that we decide at some point what, what the city share is going to be for these joint departments, what the parish's share is going to be. We take that money, deposit it into a joint account. So when it comes down to handling those matters, we halfway home. You know, we've already taken care of, you know, is that logical or feasible, or something that's ever been given any consideration?
Awesome. 15 or 16 months, you're asking a very specific question. I can see those wheels turning. So while you're getting your thoughts together, let me offer something for everybody to think. I understand the intent. If it were that easy, we should do that, okay? But what my appreciation of the budget is, it's just not that easy. So you have dedicated funds, and you have undedicated funds. Dedicated funds, whether it's millage, and those are replicated in the budget, and you can see those. Fund 401, for example, and 101 may be appropriated differently through the sales tax of the city. So the, what we're talking about is purely undedicated funds, and to the extent that that is possible, I'm open to any of that. But, and maybe because I'm new, so I've only learned this way of the budget, I'm actually getting comfortable with it, but I'm, I do this every day. I don't do it, she does every day. But I do, I'm familiar with looking at specific funds, and I can see the difference. If it's a tax, if it's a city millage, for example, it goes to a certain place. It's not co-mingled with parish money. If it's a parish tax, it's not co-mingled with city money. This undedicated funding, even that to an extent, I would say completely, actually, is not co-mingled, but maybe you can talk on that, because I think the intent behind, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Councilman, but I think the intent behind his questions, coupled with conversations you've had, maybe that would help with that discussion. Could we do that?
In my mind, I mean, we have that now.
Yeah, that's what I was...
With, we have, we know it's allocated, and then we know it's not allocated. So we can split it out and separate it now. Having a bank account just for that is, I don't think it's necessary. I think what's necessary is to decide on this allocation schedule. I think what's necessary is to decide on this allocation schedule.
We all agree with that. It's just something I thought about, and like I said, you know, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know if it's logical or feasible. It was just a, just a thought.
Because are you referring, that was a good point, I know you couldn't hear Sid, but are you referring to, I don't think you're suggesting revenue coming in, if it's only city putting in one physical account, because you can't do that, because you have dedicated funds for dedicated purposes. But I think maybe what Councilwoman Cook was mentioning, three different budget books. You have a city budget, that, and I wish we could, too, that, we could still keep the funds, I think, but I don't know if we can. My appreciation is because it's a, it's a consolidated budget, it's, the funds will still be there. All the funds in that big old book would still be the same funds, but you just have three separate books. So if we can't do that legally, and legal can opine on that, then to the extent we can, we should get as close to that intent as we possibly can. We all agree with that. But I do think the funds, if you just follow the funds, you'll see where the dollars are.
And we, we built some flexibility into the new budget system to be able to do new things with the budget. But all that would go back to budgeting by fund and not by department, and then you'd have it.
So...
It's not going to be easy on me. It's going to be a lot more work on me, but I think that you and, and other people will be able to see the flow of the money and how it stays. Road money and bridge money is spent on roads and bridges, it's not spent willy-nilly, but when you have, when you have it all blended like that, it is harder to see. It's very complicated. I studied the budget book before I came here and interviewing for this job, and I couldn't tell you what city fund balance was.
So Councilwoman Lazard, are you requesting that?
Well...
Of the, the three different, she said it's going to be hard, but she can do it, and I think we all do want transparency, council, both councils. I'll speak for the parish, because I know they want transparency. The administration wants transparency, so I think it requests...
I'm not, I'm not going to ask Lori or the administration to do anything that's, that's not feasible or that's not logical. I guess, kind of parallel with Lynette, Lynette's comments, just trying to find the, the easiest way and to, to make this as transparent and as clear as we can make it, whatever that entails, that's my request.
And Councilman, just to add, I do, and I just look at it a little differently, I do think we balance per fund. Take 101, for example, and going back to the, the very surface level discussions that were had just earlier, we can't spend more money than we have coming in, or we can't spend more money that's in the bank, excuse me, I'll say, I'll take that back. So that is a fund being balanced individually, but I understand the intent, I support this intent, and to the extent that we can, I would, we're definitely going to work ways, and I'm telling you, we're going to work ways that, to get closer there. I don't know if it'll be this budget cycle in full candor, but I do like this discussion and this approach. Any way that we can be more transparent, or, because it's not not transparent, it's going to be the same funds, it's going to be exact same funds, but I do think it'll be easier to follow.
That's all? Mr. Lazard? All right, with budget coming up, Mayor, at what point do you think you'll be ready to, I know you're working on the budget, meeting with the departments, meeting with Lori every day, all day, is what, at what point is sort of the deadline for council members to throw, keep, continue throwing their suggestions at you, before you, before you submit your executive budget?
Line for executive budget. Yana, exec deadline?
We need to pretty much have everything, in order to meet the statutory deadlines by having it introduced, we need to have decisions made early June?
I was thinking June 15, June 1st.
Before the books are printed, because I don't, I guess what I don't want is council members to say, come to you, because I want to get as much done on the head of time before the books are printed. That way, you say, "Oh, that's a great idea." I'd rather you just put it in the book.
Well, okay, so if you guys recall, about three months ago, I did give you a deadline, and I appreciate those who did submit your request, because there was a reason for that, there was a method behind my madness, and that's so we could get ahead of this. You have sent your request, I do appreciate that, taking them in consideration, still taking them in consideration, still taking in consideration what the federal government's doing, because we just don't know. And because I'm going to wait until the very last minute until I know or have a little more clarity, and Lori and Sid and I constantly go back and forth in our communication. So my recommendation, anything that you guys ever have, send it to me. If it's past the deadline, I'll tell you. Tell you, look, it's past the deadline, maybe it's not for this fiscal year, maybe it's the next fiscal year, or maybe we can do a budget amendment if it's a, if it's a fiscal situation or request as opposed to a policy request. So I never want you to not submit something for consideration, but there, there may, and it's coming pretty close if you have anything that affects this next budget. Because while our deadline is June 1st, June 15th, my dead, my internal deadline to give to, to our departments is probably in the next week or so.
All right, so the next week or so, make it a priority, council members, to meet with the mayor.
And thank you for saying that.
Yeah, no, to give it Lori, get your questions answered. As we've saw it over and over again, this is not an easy budget, this is very unique, and please, 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 meet with her, make an appointment, sit down with her, the administration, to get your questions answered. So that's all I have. Thank you, Lori, appreciate it. Moving on to ordinances for final adoption, this is a public hearing, speaker forms are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Cindy, will you please read?
City ordinance 49, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by decreasing anticipated revenues in the amount of $149,500 in law enforcement-based specialist program grant funds from the Office for Victims of Crime within the Lafayette Police Department.
I have a motion by Nakhan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 50, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by moving the remaining budget amount $59,202 from replaced train center cascade system to a new project to install a compressor system at Station 8.
I have a motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yeah.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 51, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by reappropriating the amount of $60,000 from Bridge Repair City into the budget line of Pen Hook Bridge Painting.
I have a motion by Lazard, second by Nakhan. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 52, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operations and maintenance budget and capital improvements budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the utilities department.
I have a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 53, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operations and maintenance budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the utilities department.
I have a motion by Nakhan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yeah.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 54, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council declaring the Dugard Road Electrical Distribution Systems Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary land, surpluses, easements, rights of way, and other property rights on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Can I get a motion and second? Motion by Nakhan, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinances for final adoption, this is a public hearing, speaker forms are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Cindy, will you please read?
Joint Resolution 18, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and the capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of fund balance in Fund 550 in the amount of $175,000 and appropriating within the Public Works Department Environmental Quality Division to replace a front-end loader.
I got a motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yep.
District 2?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 19, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government, the Louisiana Department of Treasury, and the State of Louisiana concerning Act 45 of 2020, second extraordinary legislative session of the Louisiana Legislature and amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing reimbursement revenues from the State of Louisiana Department of Treasury in the amount of $500,000 and appropriating within the Public Works Department for road infrastructure improvement projects.
Can I get a motion and second? Motion by Lazard, second by Nakhan. Council discussion? Sidra, actually, could I get a list of these projects?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Any other council discussion? Not seeing any? Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 20, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council suspending until October 1st, 2021, the enforcement provisions associated with the requirement that Class A restaurant conditional permit holders comply with certain provisions of Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-1 in the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances.
Can I get a motion and second?
No, ma'am.
Motion by Nakhan, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
All right, introductory ordinances. I'm asking for a motion and second from the council to introduce ordinances, items 17 through 24 in Globo. Can I get a motion and second? Motion by Nakhan, second by Cook. Cindy, will you please read?
City ordinance 55, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the Lafayette Development Code to ask to reclassify the property of case number 0N20210010, 119 St. Andrew zoning, located generally south of St. Andrew Street, west of West University Avenue, and north of St. John Street, the particular parcel being rezoned from residential single-family to mixed-use neighborhood. City ordinance 56, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a dwelling two-family duplex in a residential single-family zoning district, case number 0N20210011, 141 Whittington Drive, conditional use permit, located generally south of Johnson Street, east of Catherine Street, and west of Oak Crest Drive. City ordinance 57, 2021, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the Lafayette Development